Well, good morning, Heavenly Father. Trust we're thankful to have been brought to this place once again, gathered together by the Spirit of Almighty God. There are all sorts of things we could think and say and none of it makes any difference, but the Lord has purposed that we should be here this morning. But, go ahead. You know how? I was gonna say, "I'll do it." I meant to do that before we started. I apologize. Yeah, it's the circles. It's the... well, that's the other way. That's the other way. We're certainly glad that we have been gathered together by the Spirit of Almighty God, as He said in the Gospel of John, "Where two or three are gathered, there He is in the midst." And we can certainly pray that He will be in our midst, and we have our hope that He has gathered us together. It's real short. Let's turn to page 150, same book, and we'll sing this, and after the singing of which I'll try to offer prayer, and we'll look into the Word. And this is not the tune that's written in the Durand Lester, by the way. This is not the tune that's written there. But it's what we always sing it to you. "Lord, let me see Thy abutious face; it gives a heavy low; and angels round the throne will say: 'Tis all Thy, and they know; a glimpse of sin, a glimpse of Thee; would more delight my soul than this same world with all its joys? Could I possess the whole?'" That's a little high for you. It's a little high for me. But every time I sing this, I think back of when Elder Poole would call that, and he'd look at me and said, "Don't get it too low now." So, he liked him on the high side. If you're gonna be off a little, you better err on high. So I still kind of remember that when it comes to a couple of tunes. Bow with me. Most kind and gracious Heavenly Father, we're thankful that you have gathered the people here. Thankful that you've given us this place. Thank thee that thou hast kept us for all these many years as people. We pray that you'd be among us now, that your Spirit would take the things of Jesus and show them unto us, that he would open the Word to our understanding, and they would loose their tongues. Open our ears, loose our tongues. Lord, we know we can't do those things on our own, but thou must do them for us by thy Spirit in thy grace. What we ask for ourselves to miss, we would ask for all thy gathered congregations wherever they might be in this world. All this, Lord, we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen. I didn't remember to put the Bible in my satchel. Yes. You may.
I didn't ask you this beforehand. Would you give me permission to videotape yourself?
I'm doing it myself, so I guess I can. I guess I will. You're welcome. See, when somebody has a question, they're supposed to ask it. I've told you all that before. Sometimes I have to speak to that audience too. I'm sorry. You know, when I think about the situation in the world today, things that happen, I've said this before, and if I live, I'll say it again. If it were not, with the belief I had, that our God, who sits in the heavens, who according to the Psalms hath done whatsoever he hath pleased, regardless of what men think ought to be done, and that though I may not like everything going on, well, it's for the best. It's for the best. I wanna read just a couple of things. I thought I could see this big old thing without my glasses. There it is, right there. The last part of it. I'm gonna start reading in John 17. This is a prayer of Jesus, that he prayed in the garden on the night that he was betrayed before the Jewish army and all came to get him, betrayed by Judas. He prayed this prayer. "These words spake Jesus and lifted up his eyes to heaven and said, 'Father, the hour is come; glorify thy Son, that thy Son also may glorify me, as thou hast given him power over all flesh, that he should give eternal life to as many as thou hast given him.'" Jesus knew that the time was right then when he was gonna be put to death. A sacrifice for the sins of his people. And prayer to the Father is for him to glorify thy Son, as thy Son also, that thy Son also may glorify thee. And what does he base this on, this glorification? There are several important things in this second verse. Think about it. "As thou hast given him power over all flesh." You've heard it. I've heard it. We've all heard it. The devil's out there just doing all sorts of mischief. These people out here, they're obviously controlled by the devil. Which ones? The ones I'm against. No, Jesus is who has power over all flesh. He has the authority over everything. He is the King of kings and the Lord of lords. He is the one name, His is the one name, under heaven and among men whereby we must be saved. Yes, "as thou hast given him power over all flesh," that he should do what? Give eternal life to as many as thou hast given him. Now you have to ask yourself a question. Because how you interpret this depends on the answer to this question. How many was given to him? Now, was all of humanity given to him? Then all of humanity has eternal life. Did God, before the foundation of the world, make a choice? Make an election? Choose a people, love them, and give them to his Son? I believe we could go throughout the New Testament and show this, that that is exactly what happened. When you look here, I have manifested, verse 6, "I have manifested thy name unto the men, which thou gavest me out of the world." So a people was given to Jesus Christ out of the world, thine they were, and thou gavest them me, and they have kept thy word." These are the ones that have eternal life. The world tells you you need to get eternal life. Eternal life is a gift of God. And think about this with me for just a second. Because I am of the opinion that ninety-five, at least, percent of the people that use that term eternal life don't realize what they're saying. If something's eternal, where's its beginning? It has none. Well, where's its end? It has none. It is. It's eternal. It transcends time. What kind of life are we talking about here? A life that existed in eternity? Yes. In the very first chapter of John's Gospel, he talks about in Christ, when he was in the Word. "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God; the same was in the beginning with God. All things were made by him, and without him not anything made that was made." Walk it right on down. And you see, that in him was life. And it says, "That eternal life that he was to give to his children, it was in him, and that shall have no end." That's why when Mary, was it Mary or Martha, come to him, and he said, "Oh, if you'd been here, my brother Lazarus would not have died. He'll rise at the last day. He'll rise. Your brothers shall rise again." That's what Jesus told her. She said, "I know he'll rise at the resurrection of the last day." He said, "I'm the resurrection and life." I, Jesus, am the resurrection and the life. But what I want to get to is this part, the resurrection and the life. I want to, I want to think about in the sense that in the next part of it, "He that liveth and believeth in me shall never die." Believe us, thou knowest. "He that liveth and believeth in me shall never die." That's the other part of the eternal life. "Oh, this body, this flesh, this mortal being, shall lay down and die." You know why it will lay down and die? Because it's sinful. It's sinful. Therefore, the wages of sin that it is going to be paid is death, laid in the grave. But the Spirit is life because of righteousness. Now, what kind of righteousness? Do you believe that you can keep a spiritual entity alive by doing good things in your natural being? Absolutely not. These two are contrary to each other. Think of it. Even the words of Jesus. Man, I'd be quoting from the Gospel of John a lot here. And this was, y'all ought to have that memorized two or three times by now, as much as I quote it. "That which is born of the flesh is flesh, and that which is born of the spirit is spirit." You can't join them. You can't join them. The Spirit is life because of the righteousness of Jesus Christ, and no other righteousness will do. Because it's a righteousness that transcends time, space, everything else. It's the righteousness of God that existed before the Mosaic Law, the Ten Commandments, and the rest of the Jewish law was ever given. It's real righteousness. He gave eternal life, a life with no beginning and no ending, to as many as God gave him, the Father gave him. And this is life eternal. And this is a very, very critical text. "This is life eternal, that they might know Thee, the only true God, and Jesus Christ whom thou assent." Our Lord, as he walked this earth, said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man cometh to the Father except by me." And here, later on, he says this, that they might know, "Life eternal is manifested in this, that they know the Father, and that they know Jesus whom he sent." Yes, that they might know Jesus, not that they might know about Him, not that they might know Him as one of many out there who provide a wonderful way, an alternative way. No, 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 no. He is the way. This is the only way one has eternal life, is to know the true and the living God, and Jesus Christ whom he sent. I have said it before, and I'll say it again. God will not leave people ignorant. The Apostle Paul on the road to Damascus said this. He saw the risen Christ, "So, so, why are you persecuting me? Who art thou, Lord?" Well, you'll find out in a little while. No, no. He identified himself. "I'm Jesus who you're persecuting. I am Jesus who you're persecuting." No, no. You know the true God, and you know Jesus Christ. So now the question becomes, how do you know Him? Do you know Him here, with the intellect? No, that's knowing about Him. I used to think knowing about Him and knowing Him went hand in hand, but you know they don't. One can know all about Him and yet never know Him. Look at people who are experts, scholars, of someone in the past. You know, somebody might be a wonderful, have a most wonderful knowledge of some of these people, historical figures, and never knew them. Never knew them, died for their time. But yet, there are experts about them because they have knowledge in their heads. Because God's children have a knowledge that surpasses that. It's an experiential knowledge. And by that I mean that their knowledge doesn't come from reading in a book. Their knowledge doesn't come from listening to a discourse of some kind. And hey, that's just the way it is. This kind of knowledge, this kind of knowledge comes by revelation. Revelation. Listen to Mr. Paul in Galatians. "I certify to you, brethren..." It's as if he says, we can take this down to the notary and we'll slap a seal on it that I'm telling the truth here. "Certify it to you. I certify you, brethren, that the gospel which was preached of me is not after man; for I neither received it of man, neither was I taught, but by the revelation of Jesus Christ." What did he say? "I didn't receive any of this of man." People have to today, to be accepted in the so-called world of Christendom. Man, you gotta get yourself a good degree, go to the right school, learn what the gospel is from good teachers. "I certify you that the gospel, the good news, which was preached, which was proclaimed by me, is not of man; for I didn't receive it of man, neither was I taught by man, but by the revelation of Jesus Christ." Yes. It's the same revelation that I believe is talked about there, that gives you the knowledge of Christ. Because it's in the gospel, it's in the good news that we hear of Jesus, what he's done, what he accomplished, and how he applies it to his children, what he gives them. And it's good news because the one who has been, let's rephrase that, the one to whom God has begun teaching these things, they know themselves as something. Oh, really? Well, they know themselves as? Sinner. Not just say the word, but feel it in the heart. "I feel myself a sinner, and one that has no way to remedy that sin on my own. Could I be good for the remainder of my life? What good would that do to what came before? Couldn't make up for it? Nothing makes up for it. Sin demands its wages. Sin demands punishment, or it wouldn't be sin. But Jesus. Jesus came. Not long after what we read here, he's gonna be hung on that cross, and he's gonna pour out his last blood, and he is gonna be the sacrifice for sin that will last forever. All of the sacrifices of the Jewish religion, all of the sacrifices that were appointed by God in the Old Testament law. Read about how many there were. Read about how many priests there were in the tabernacle, and Levites, in the temples, performing all these things. Can you imagine? And yet each one of those sacrifices was good for that one sin for the people, when it was a sin offering. Then once a year, they all got together and made sacrifice for the nation on the day of atonement. All of these things showing forth that the blood of Christ was going to be shed, and it would cleanse from all sin completely. Everyone for whom that blood was shed is cleansed from top to bottom. Everyone for whom that blood was shed is cleansed inside. They're made new. Made new, yes. It's a new creation, a new creature. That's why I quoted that scripture, "That which is born of the flesh is flesh; that which is born of the spirit is spirit." And they can't be mingled. No, they can't be mingled. So yes, to know Jesus means to have him revealed to you as the Savior of sinners, of the one whose amazing grace is shed forth over all his people, that they might know Thee, the only true God in Jesus Christ whom thou assent. There's one God. There's one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus. The Apostle Paul told us that, didn't he? The man Christ Jesus. Christ literally means anointed. It's a word used for the Messiah, the Promised One, who would come to deliver his people. Jesus, the anointed. Yes, had the Spirit without measure. Yes. His was a a life like none other, God and man united in one. He could suffer death, though we know the eternal God cannot die. "My God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?" He cried out on the cross. And then he gave up the ghost, gave up his spirit. I have, this verse forward, John 17, "I have glorified Thee on earth." I have finished the work which Thou gavest me to do." "I finished the work you sent me for." Judas had gone to betray him. "What you do, do quickly." And off he went. He'd had the supper, instituted the supper, gone out under the Mount of Olives, talked to his disciples, prayed. Now, the only thing left is death. The only thing left is death. Time would fail to tell of the wonderful works, even those that are recorded, just the ones recorded in the New Testament there, in the Gospels. It'd take more time than we've got to recount most of them. Suffice it to say, "The lame walked, the deaf heard. The eyes of the blind were opened. Sick were healed, the devils cast out. The poor had the good news preached to them. The kingdom of God was proclaimed from the mouth of the King Himself." There it is. He's proclaiming it. "The work Thou gavest me to do, and in all that, and in everything, from the womb, all..." He was without sin. It's the only way it could be a sacrifice. It's the only way it could be a sacrifice. For under the law, the sacrifice must be without blemish, no spot. You know? When I said that just now, you know what I thought of? I thought of in the Book of Ephesians, where bride is described, not having spot, nor wrinkle, nor any such thing. Just as that lamb, just as that sacrifice was to be perfect, so our Lord is perfect. And so His children have that perfection as well. That's that which is born of the Spirit. That's that new heavenly creation. That's that spiritual lamb that has eternal life. "I finished the work which Thou gavest me to do, and now, O Father, glorify Thou me with Thine own self." With Thine own self. He's not praying for, to get His deity back, so to speak. It's... You listen to some people, you'd think that's what they're saying. No, He's praying that His humanity would now be glorified with the glory of God. "That which I had with Thee before the world was. I have manifested Thy name unto the men which Thou gavest me out of the world. Thy and Thy word Thou gavest them Me, and they have kept Thy word." I wanna go down just a little bit. Right here. Verse fourteen, we'll skip down to there for just a moment. "I have given them Thy word." "I've given them Thy word." They heard it. It's in their hearts. "And the world hath hated them." "I've given them Thy word." You'd think anybody that would come with the word of God would be loved. No, the world hates it. The world hates it. "The world hath hated them." Why? Because they're not of the world, even as I am not of the world. Scripture tells us that, that new eternal life that's in us, is Christ in us, the hope of glory, right? That's what it means. They're not of the world, even as I am not of the world. That seed of which we were born, if we are His, is what? Whoop, wrong. I don't know exactly where it is, but this, the text is that we're born of an incorruptible seed. Incorrupt... Ah, that's the inheritance. Yeah. That's all right. So... What do we expect from the world? Approbation? Pat on the back, thunderous applause? No. "I gave them Thy word, and the world hath hated them because they're not of the world, even as I am not of the world." "I pray not that Thou shouldst take them out of the world, but Thou shouldst keep them from the evil. They are not of the world, even as I am not of the world." I'm gonna read verse seventeen. They're talking about that for a minute. "Lord willing, I think that might be it." "Sanctify them through Thy truth." The truth causes a separation. And that's really all the word sanctify means. It don't mean holiness. It doesn't mean getting better and better. It just means separated. The truth separates. There's not five thousand people here because the truth separates. Sanctify them, separate them through Thy truth. Thy word is truth. Thy word is truth. That's a... That's a thought that isn't appreciated much anymore, is it? Thy word? By the way, I think we can take that in two ways, perhaps. In the... I quoted earlier, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. The same was in the beginning with God," speaking of Jesus Christ in eternity, that eternal word. Thy word is truth. And we're separated in Him. What are you being... Well, look at you in chapter, uh, verse one. See what it says about those. "You, the servant of Jesus Christ, and brother of James, to them that are sanctified, separated by God the Father, and preserved in Christ Jesus Christ." You're separated into Jesus Christ and preserved there and here. "Sanctify them through Thy truth." What is Thy truth? Thy word is truth. So many times we're getting hung up on, on words, just written words. And don't get me wrong, this might, that might be part of what that's talking about there. But I think more than that, it's the eternal word, Jesus Christ, He who is the way, the truth, and the life. You know, we've gotten... We talked about Him being the, um, the life when we was talking about the eternal life of God, given to His children. "I'm the resurrection and the life." Well, listen. He's the truth. There is no truth outside of Him. We like to think there might be, but that's flesh. The Spirit knows better. Yes, there is no truth outside of Christ. He didn't say, "I'm the way, I'm a truth and the life," but the truth. We're sanctified through Him. It's in Him that the truth is. And if you're looking for sanctification, if you're looking for glorification, if you're looking for being kept, if you're looking for anything, and I do mean anything, in your own strength and by your own power and in the, uh, wisdom of your own mind, forget it. Forget it. It will not be good enough. It will not be strong enough, and it certainly can't keep you. The strength of the flesh cannot do anything to enhance the life that is in the Spirit. Now... What does that tell us? Same thing it told the Israelites at the Red Sea, or as Moses told the Israelites at the Red Sea. See there? Egyptians there, mountains. Nobody knew what to do. Moses told them, "Stand still and see the salvation of the Lord." Didn't tell them to help. Told them to stand still and look at it. That the salvation of the Lord is being manifested. And what happened? That Red Sea opened up, and they went across. Didn't even get the shoes muddy, dry shod it says. Yep. That's right. Stand still. Stop your working. Stop your trying in the flesh. And look to Jesus for it all, start to finish, top to bottom, everything in between. It's all His work. It's all His power. It's all His righteousness. And it's a gift from Him to every one of His children that were given to Him before the world began in that glorious union by the choice of God. I hope you read John seventeen, that great high priestly prayer that Jesus prayed there. Not for the Jews, not for the world, but for His people, the intercession that He made for them there. Just hit the high points. Maybe not even very good at that, but I hope that, uh... Hope the Lord give you a mind out of it at least, a morsel. If you bow with me, we'll dispense. Heavenly Father, we thank Thee for all of the ones Thou hast gathered here this morning. We pray that Thou would give us each a... A crumb at least to satisfy us, to teach us, to bless us. Be with us as we travel. Be with us in the weeks to come and teach us, we pray, for Christ's sake. Amen.